Folks, we're waiting on just a couple more, but it's noon now, so let's see. I think.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. We're recording and ready to start when you are, sir.
Thank you. Carrie. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Boston City Council virtual meeting. My name is Matt O'Malley, and I'm City Council President Pro Tempore. Today is March 31, 2021. And in accordance with Governor Baker's executive order signed last year, more than a year ago now, the Boston City Council is meeting remotely. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube or by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Certainly, Mr. President. A roll call. Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counsel Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counsel Braden.
Present.
Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Sabi George.
Present.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counsel Flynn.
Yeah.
Counsel Mahia.
Here.
Counsel O'Malley.
Here.
And Counsel Wu.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We will now introduce our clergy, who's a guest of Counselor Frank Baker. I'm delighted to welcome Reverend Elizabeth Carrier Lad from one of my favorite churches in Boston, the First Parish of Dorchester on Meeting House Hill. Counsel Baker, the floor is yours. Thank you, Mr. President. And Reverend, it's nice to meet you. Hopefully someday we'll be able to meet in person. As Matt said, First Parish Church, which is connected to the Meeting House up on Meeting House Hill, which was the site of the first civic meeting in the country. And it was all about property rights. So today I introduce you Reverend Elizabeth Carrier Lad from the First Parish Church. Reverend Lad became the minister of First Parish Church in August 2020. First Parish Church is a Unitarian Universalist church and has stood at Meeting House Hill in Dorchester since 1670. And since its founding, has been committed to a strong social mission. Reverend Carrier Lad received her Master's and Divinity Degree from Meadville Lombard Theological School and was ordained in 2012. Since 2013, Reverend Carrier Lad has been the coordinator of youth programs at the Unitarian Universalist Church in Muncie, Indiana. And she previously served congregations in San Diego, California, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Lafayette, Lafayette's in Louisiana. In Louisiana, there was.
Indiana.
Yeah. Lafayette, Indiana, okay. And Indianapolis, Indiana. She was born in Medford, Mass. and grew up in greater Boston area. She and her husband Reverend Seth Carrier Lad have four children. And I want to thank Reverend Carrier Lad and the Board of Trustees at First Parish Church for opening the community and becoming a COVID-19 vaccination site. And with that, Reverend, I hand it over to you for our blessing today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you join me in the spirit of prayer, meditation, reflection, as is your practice? Great mystery that binds us all together. We ask that you be with us here today. Wrap the love that holds us all around our great city. On this transgender day of visibility, may we remember that all of us are precious children of God, that showing up as our full selves and being seen is a blessing, that diversity is to be celebrated in all of its forms. Source of life, we ask that you be most with those who need you most today and always. The people living without homes, those who are incarcerated, those who struggle to feed their families, essential workers and healthcare professionals who risk their lives for us each day, and all those who were impacted by COVID-19, those who have lost loved ones, those who are fighting the virus now or in a long-term way. May we bring the heartbreak and the sorrow and the inequity and the racism that plagues this city into our hearts as we face the work before us so that our hearts can break open enough to hold all of the people who most need our love and our care. Love, as we continue to find a way forward together amidst this trying time, let us all remember that life is sacred, that we are our siblings' keepers, and that every decision we make has an impact on the people we serve. May we be filled with gratitude for all the gifts of life that we have received. May we be generous in every way we can be. May our love for our city and its beautiful people guide us today and always. May it be so. Blessed be, and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend, for that inspiring message. And thank you for noting that today is indeed a transgender day of visibility. I appreciate that, as that set the tone for those inspiring words. Counsel Baker will now leave the body in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able to, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Reverend. Thank you, Counsel Baker. Madam Clerk, please amend the attendance records to reflect that Counselor Campbell has joined us.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We're now moving on to approval of the minutes, our first order of business. Is there any discussion on the prior week's minutes, seeing inherent none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented.
Approval of the minutes. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yeah.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, the minutes of last meeting have been approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0472.
Certainly. Docket 0472, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to apply for, accept and expend for federal fiscal year 2020 continuum of care grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in an amount not to exceed $38,685,686. These funds will be used to support programs that provide services and housing to the homeless.
Docket 0472 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0473.
Docket 0473, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $330,000 in the form of a grant for the FY21 State Traffic Safety Information System Improvements Grant awarded by the United States Department of Transportation passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund improved electronic reporting of collision incidents in Boston, raising the current rate of 7% to 70% over the six-month span of the grant.
Docket 0473 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0474 and docket 0475 together?
Certainly. Docket 0474, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $18,282 in the form of a grant for the No Kids Hungry, awarded by Share Our Strengths, to be administered by the Office of Food Access. The grant will fund translation and interpretation services to increase accessibility to critical food resources for families and community members. And docket number 0475, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $15,000 in the form of a grant for the FY20 Senior Companion Program awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Service to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund reimbursement for travel and meals plus stipend.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Counselor Liz Braden, Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Chair Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules and pass order 0474, No Kids Hungry, award of $18,282. As we know, so many of our children in our city are facing issues with food security. Boston Public Schools and other agencies within our city have done a stellar job in ensuring food access over the period of the last year during the pandemic. And I feel that we should pass this money on in a timely fashion to the Office of Food Access so that they can continue to offer translation and interpretative services to those most in need in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Braden. These dockets will be put it on separately?
Yes, we can do them separately. I also asked to suspend and pass docket 0475, Senior Companion Program. Again, Age Strong has done an incredible job working with our isolated elders in this crisis. And I feel that this money should be expedited and delivered to Age Strong in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So is Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Counsel Braden is seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0474 and 0475. We will vote on these separately. Madam Clerk, would you please begin by calling the roll for 474?
Certainly. Docket 0474, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell. Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0474 has received a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please now call the roll for docket 0475?
Docket 0475, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yeah.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yeah.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. President, docket number 0475 has received a unanimous vote. And the rule has been suspended, and the order has been passed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Would you please read docket 0476?
Certainly. Docket 0476, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the FY21 National Violent Death Reporting System Grant awarded by the Mass Department of Public Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund data collection by the Bureau of Investigative Services and the Drug Control Unit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counsel Andrea Campbell, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I will be on shortly. But this is a grant that, in the amount of $10,000 that I'm seeking suspension of the rules and passage of, this is... I'm sorry, my chief of staff, I think, is texting me at the same time. Let me just make sure, is this docket 0476?
Yes.
That is correct.
$10,000?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'm seeking the suspension of the rules and passage of this docket. It's a relatively small amount, pretty self-explanatory. It's from the State Department's Public Health Department as part of FY21 National Violent Death Reporting System. It's a grant that will support data collection and be used by the Police Department. Let me just... Can I actually take a quick recess and come back to this docket? Counsel O'Malley?
Certainly, we will.
Can I say maybe go through a couple more, and I'll be right back on? I just have to get some information from my chief of staff on something.
All right, fair enough. We will return. We will potentially move for reconsideration of this. I will... I think, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, I should refer this to committee, and then perhaps Counsel Campbell later can move for reconsideration to suspend rules and pass to allow us to move on in the meeting. Is that correct?
You can do it that way, or we could just continue and come back to this matter.
Fair enough.
And leave it on the table.
That would be great.
Sure, okay. So the docket 476 will remain on the table. And moving on now to, we will return to it later in the meeting. Moving on next, of course. Moving on next to reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 477?
Thank you. Docket 0477, communication was received from the city clerk with filing with the Boston Planning and Development Agency of the report and decision on the application for One Body Claringdon Street, Chapter 121A Project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0477 will be placed on file. Please now read docket 0478.
Thank you. Docket 0478, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Dustin Starett as collective treasurer effective April 16, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0478 will be placed on file. Moving on next to reports of committees. Please read docket 0263.
Thank you. Docket 0263, the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services, to which is referred on February 3, 2021. Docket number 0263, message and order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $80,000 in the form of a grant for the FY21 Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, Recycled Dividends, awarded by the Mass Department of Environmental Protection to be administered by the Public Works Department. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Ed Flynn, Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Chair Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this docket last Thursday on the 25th. And Brian Coughlin from the Public Works Department, Sanitary Division, was present to speak about this grant. The hearing was also attended by Counselors Braden and Mahia. This is the second time the city of Boston receives this grant from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection in order to fund specific waste reduction programs or initiatives in residential waste. The funds are incorporated into the Implementation Efforts Plan outlined in Zero Waste Boston, Recommendations of Boston Zero Waste Advisory Committee. The committee is composed of a cross-section of Boston, neighborhood residents, community organizations, environmental advocates, and business institutions, large and small. The Public Works Department is actively looking for any additional opportunities to improve recycling and composting in the city. This includes public outreach to expand participation of residential recycling and composting. And just finally, Mr. President, we had a great conversation about the recycling program. Brian Coughlin provided excellent background information and has agreed to join us sometime this summer to do more public awareness education campaigns on the importance of recycling and composting. I know you've been a strong advocate of that, Counsel O'Malley. So looking forward to these conversations as we go forward. This is an important grant from Public Works Department to carry out this work. So I recommend that this docket ought to pass.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0263. Seeing no further discussion on this docket, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0263, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yeah.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Sabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Sabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. Mr. President, docket number 0263 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0346?
Certainly. Docket 0346, the Committee on Community Preservation Act, to which was referred on February 24, 2021. Docket number 0346, message and order for an appropriation in the amount of $25,50374 from the Fiscal Year 2021 Preservation Fund. Revenues for community preservation projects and recommendations of the City of Austin Community Preservation Committee, known as the CPC, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Michael Flaherty, the Chair of the Committee on the Community Preservation Act. Chair Flaherty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As referenced, this was over $25 million that goes to the Community Preservation Fund. The matter was sponsored by former Mayor Martin J. Walsh, referred to the committee on February 24. And the committee held a hearing on March 25, where a public comment was taken. The CPC is recommending $13,617,850 for five affordable housing projects and $5,598,569 for 34 historic preservation projects and $6,283,955 for 28 recreational use and open space projects all across the city. All very exciting opportunity for our city and for the organizations and the advocates that competed and put forth their applications. The Community Preservation Fund was created, as we know, by the adoption of the Community Preservation Act, Mass General Law's Chapter 44B, back in November of 2016. And it's funded by 1% property tax-based surcharge on residential and business property tax bills that took effect July of 2017 with an annual state match distribution from Mass Community Preservation Trust Fund. Section 5 of that act provides the city council shall take action and approve such appropriations from the Community Preservation Fund in order to implement the recommendations put forth by the Community Preservation Committee. That is our role as the Boston City Council. Since adopting CPA, over $67 million has been awarded to 131 projects spanning in every single neighborhood in the city. Pending our body's approval of this appropriation request, we will have awarded over $92 million to 198 projects since the first round of funding. During the hearing, we heard testimony from the following members of the administration: Emma Handy, Chief Financial Officer; Sheila Dillon, Chief of Housing; Jessica Boatright, Deputy Director of Neighborhood Housing; Maureen Flynn, Deputy Director of Boston Home Center; Karen Rivasa, Assistant Director of Home Buy Services; Chris Cook, Chief of the Environment, Energy, and Open Space; Ryan Woods, Commissioner of the Parks; Aldo Guerin, Senior Planner for the Parks Department; Courtney Whalen, Historic Preservation and Community Preservation Program; Sally Zimmerman, Historic Preservation and Community Preservation Program; Badeen Brown, Director of the Community Relation and Community Preservation Program; and Raisa Tapia, Manager of Operations, Community Preservation Program. During the hearing, we heard testimony in support of the recommended projects, the overreaching priorities of the Community Preservation Program, as well as an overview about the administrative process and the procedures of the city's Community Preservation Program. The committee also received written testimony in advance of the hearing expressing support for the projects, as well as public testimony during the course of the hearing. The selection of the projects under docket 0346 provides benefits across the neighborhoods. The projects align with the city's climate objectives for carbon neutrality, as well as objectives for open space and equity provided to new parks, expanding the tree canopy, and creating new open spaces for community gatherings. The historic preservation projects allow for structural improvements to buildings that provide programs, as well will create new meeting places that will immediately serve surrounding communities and residents of the city. And the affordable housing projects and initiatives will address Boston's affordable housing needs through the city, through the city, provide housing stability to many individuals and families, and will provide new affordable home ownership opportunities as well. So all in all, we touched every single base. I would consider it a grand slam. Therefore, I am recommending that the City Council approve the recommended projects under Docket 0346, and that this docket ought to pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Chair Flaherty. Is there any further discussion on Docket 0346? Seeing none, Chair Flaherty seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of Docket number 0346. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0346, Counsela Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsela Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0346 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, and congratulations all. This is wonderful. Madam Clerk, would you please read Docettes 0415 and 0216 together?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0415, the Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on March 10, 2021, docket number 0415, order regarding a text amendment to the Boston zoning code to add retail residential kitchens as an accessory home occupation, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft. And docket number 0216, Committee on Government Operations, to which is referred on January 13, 2021, docket number 0216, an ordinance to establish guidelines for permitting retail residential kitchens, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to just quickly summarize why we both have a zoning amendment and an ordinance, and then I'm going to quickly summarize the zoning amendment, and then if it's okay, my recommendation is that it pass, and we can vote on that. And then we can do the second one, or would you prefer Mr. President pro temp that we do the entire description and then vote on them separately?
Yeah, I think, why don't we, why don't you speak to both Docket 415 and 216 together, and then we will vote separately on the two dockets?
Very well.
Thank you.
Your colleagues, 0415 is an order regarding a text amendment to the zoning code to add retail residential kitchens as an accessory home occupation. This is sponsored by Counselor Julia Mahia and was referred to the committee on March 10, 2021. The committee held a working session on March 25, 2021. Essentially, this is a, the proposed text amendment will allow for residential kitchens as an accessory use as of right. The text amendment amends Article 2A definitions applicable in neighborhood districts by adding residential kitchens permitted to produce cottage food products as a accessory home occupation. That other accessory home occupations include piano lessons, or also music lessons, sewing at home as well, just to give an example. We, the committee discussed the amendment of the zoning code, which would make it an as-of-right, and as such would essentially forego having to go through the ZBA. Who testified on behalf of the administration includes, excuse me, Commissioner Dion Irish, Chief of Staff of ISD, Chris English, Dan Prendergast, ISD Health Inspector, Brian Glasscock, the Deputy Director of Regulatory Planning and Zoning of BPDA, Commissioner John Dempsey from the Fire, excuse me, from the Boston Fire Department, and the Fire Marshal, Brian Tully. Again, we discussed the real concern for many people, which was if this was going to forego the ZBA, why? The biggest issue was that for many people who would like to have residential kitchens, to have them wait in line at the ZBA was going to essentially make this as-of-right obsolete, or, excuse me, this opportunity obsolete, because they'd be waiting for it. Moreover, it would be overburdening, we felt, the ZBA with one more thing and one more task for them to assess. We discussed that other home businesses, for example, don't require zoning relief or neighborhood approval, as I mentioned, piano lessons or sewing. The commissioner indicated that zoning relief would only be required if the operator of a retail residential kitchen was conducting the direct sales at home, which this does not allow for. The committee discussed that conducting direct sales at home would require the ZBA involvement because of traffic concerns and congestion in residential neighborhood. The committee further discussed that neighborhood should be and could be notified without overburdening the ZBA. We'll address that in the ordinance. The committee also discussed the corresponding proposed legislation regarding the, of course, the ordinance that I'm discussing, that I just mentioned, that establishes a permitting process, standards, authority, notice requirements, and regulatory framework through ISD. The very brief amendments to be put in are the words "in person" are added in the line before the word "trading," again, limiting this particular kind of sale of residential kitchen to just, to prohibiting the in-person component of it, excuse me. And then the amendment will allow retail residential kitchens as of right as an accessory use, provided that there are not sales conducted on the premises. Adding the words "in person" will require zoning relief and community involvement should an operator decide to conduct sales out of the home. The goal, of course, is that they are preparing the food to be sold at a farmer's market, they're preparing the food to be sold someplace else, but they are not preparing the food in any way, shape, or form to be consumed on-site in the apartment or in the residential unit. Passage of the text amendment in its new draft will ensure that the ZBA is not overburdened and would require the ZBA relief and community involvement for sales at home. So as the Chair of Committee on Government Operations, to which the following was referred, I submit this report recommending that the docket ought to pass in a new draft. That's the zoning amendment that complements the ordinance, of which I'm now going to describe. Docket 0216, an ordinance to establish guidelines for permitting and retail residential kitchens was, again, sponsored by Counselor Mahia, was referred to the committee on January 13, 2021. The committee held a hearing on February 16, 2021, where a public comment was taken, and working sessions on March 9 and March 25, 2021. The proposed ordinance does the following, well, I'm going to summarize some of the amendments to the proposed ordinance, excuse me. In Definition section, the definition of residential, retail residential kitchens is amended by adding the following provisions: With respect to zoning code Article 2A, which states that merchandise cannot be sold in the home in person. This change will remove the need for ZBA relief and will eliminate the concern of overburdening the ZBA. Under Section B, Permits, the word retail and/or wholesale distribution are removed in the first section. This change will provide consistency with state law because wholesale is licensed by the state. The amended sentence is as follows: A retail residential kitchen permit shall be required for any resident who wishes to prepare cottage foods and other foods deemed to be admissible by the Inspection Services Department, such as juices or teas. Under the Training section, there's a lot of back and forth, for example, about notice, there's a lot of back and forth about making sure that people are prepared and also safe. We added in the words, a nationally accredited food safety certification exam organization recognized in Massachusetts is going to be required. Also, under the Training section, the following subsections are added: That ISD shall ensure that all retail residential kitchens, permatees, receive training and any other necessary safety information regarding labor laws, fire safety, and other related information as necessary. And the permatees shall sign and return all required certificates, trainings, and informational packets, as required by ISD. Essentially, we are making sure that they are given information, that they can't say they didn't know, they weren't told what the standards are for all of the different safety things that we can identify. Under the Compliance and Enforcement section, the following new subsections are added: Requirement to include permit numbers on all advertisements. This specifically came from ISD to make sure that when they were putting out things in business cards, or whatever they choose to put out, that they actually put their permit number in there so that people could look them up and know that they actually are permitted to have a retail residential kitchen. Essentially, and then the signage, we wanted to make sure that we were consistent with residential zoning. No exterior signage shall be allowed unless such signage is permitted under already the existing Boston zoning code, Chapter 16-33 of the city code. The Penalty section is added to allow for the fine to be up to $300, and then we added in per day if they're found to be operating a residential kitchen illegally. In our hearings, the only one, I think there were two actually, and at least registered with the city, or at least notified the city. The following language is added as a subsection F regarding the notification requirements: Notification, ISD shall, in coordination with the Office of Neighborhood Services or other related department, give notice to the landlord or other appropriate entity that a retail residential kitchen exists at the permatees' location. This is notice, this is not permission seeking. The, as right now, you would not need to seek permission essentially to have piano lessons or to have a sewing business in your apartment. So this is being consistent with that use. The reason why we required notice, the notice is not required for those other ones, is because landlords may want to renegotiate the lease, or may disagree, may not want that to be allowed, or to have that, but the landlord should know. We also wanted to, again, address, I believe it was Counselor Flynn's concerns, about the neighborhood knowing and why the ZBA process is part of notifying the neighborhood, and just outright require notification to be put out to the entire community, or at least within a certain radius. Section G is added regarding reporting requirements, and the language is as follows: ISD shall require an annual report detailing the number of applicants, recipients of the retail residential kitchen permits, and other relevant information submitted to the city clerk. The city clerk shall docket the report and include the docket in the agenda of the next occurring meeting of the Boston City Council. This section shall sunset on December 31, 2024. We wanted to make sure that we got regular reports, understanding how many residential kitchens are coming up, if we need to adjust our regulations to meet the new demand, or if we are maybe not in need of additional regulations, and that things are going just fine. But we wanted to make sure we had that reporting. It's a new industry, it's a new emerging industry, and so we, that's why we also kept the annual reports, just 2024. We didn't see the point in making sure that we had reports for the next 20, 30 years, didn't make sense. We also made sure to build in some time, some build-out time for these materials, and for folks to get a little trained up in the new residential kitchen ordinance, and also to advertise that this is a new potential thing to happen. We encourage ISD to work with, I think it's DND, who may have a list of landlords, to inform all of them that this is coming down the pike, and we put built-in 30 days to, before this becomes effective. So I know that was a long report, but I want to just acknowledge the amount of work we put in to make sure we got this right. Above all else, please note, this is a legal use, and the cities are tasked with regulating it, but this is a legal use allowed throughout the state in commonwealth already. And so, just to summarize, again, this is a zoning amendment, as well as an ordinance. And after we pass the zoning amendment, it will then still need to go through and be passed at the zoning commission level, which we will file directly there. So we built in enough time also for that filing, and to make sure that we're consistent in, that the two marry each other and hit at the same time. So as Chair of the Government, Committee of Government Operations, to which the following was referred, 0216, an ordinance to establish guidelines for permitting residential kitchens, I submit this report recommending that this docket also ought to pass in a new draft.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for that very thorough overview and report. Before we go on to the two votes, I did want to see if the lead sponsor, Counselor Mahia, had any comments on this, or would you like us just to proceed with the votes?
I can't see the option to raise my hand, President.
Well, then, please proceed. The floor is yours. The chair recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Mahia. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and here we are. After two hearings and three working sessions, we're bringing this two dockets to a vote. This has been such an amazing learning opportunity, not just for myself and our team, but for the advocates and constituents we have worked with. We would have not been here at this point without the amazing advocates who have been with us from the beginning, Andre, Irene, and Manish. They have taken our calls, attended countless team meetings and working sessions, and have continuously represented their communities in this space. Our office has set out to lead with a community-centered approach, centering space for the people to design their own policy. From start to finish, this has been people policy. When we step back and let the community lead, the community leads, and now we're on the verge of making it possible for hundreds of entrepreneurs across the city to start their small business. We set out to change the way we do business in the city of Boston, literally. Through this ordinance, residents will have an ability to set up shop in their home and prepare certain food products. Through our working sessions, we have made this ordinance even stronger by requiring permatees to sign and return fact sheets containing crucial labor laws and fire safety information. And a special shout-out to Counselor Edwards for her fierce advocacy around that. We have also eliminated a lot of red tape by filing our text amendment, which will get rid of the need to appeal to the ZBA. I encourage all of my colleagues to think for a moment about who this ordinance will benefit. This ordinance is not for large corporations to set up shop, it's for small minority immigrant entrepreneurs who want to share their food and their culture with their community. It's for entrepreneurs in Chinatown, Alston Village, Grove Hall, Mattapan, Hyde Park, and everywhere in our city. We have an opportunity to uplift our entrepreneurs, whose only problem is that they face systemic barriers to wealth in our city. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of these two dockets up for vote today, so that we can truly change the way we do business. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mahia. So, Madam Clerk, seeing no further discussion on these two dockets, we will now begin with the first vote on Docket 0415. This is the zoning amendment, and it is being presented to us in a new draft. Would you please call the roll on Docket 0415?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0415, Counsela Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsela Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Present.
Counselor Baker, present.
Bach, then.
Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0415 has passed.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0216? Again, this is the companion docket, which establishes guidelines for retail residential kitchen.
Thank you. Docket 0216, Counsela Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsela Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Present.
Counselor Baker, present. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0216 has passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations, Counselor Mahia. Before we move on to matters recently heard for possible action, Madam Clerk, I'd like you to once again place before the body Docket 0476, which was a communication from her honor, the mayor. This was a grant that was referred to the Public Safety Committee. Could you please place that before us, and I will then call the chair.
Would you like me to reread it, Mr. President?
No, that's fine.
Okay, great.
So I guess, the chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Campbell. The floor is yours on Docket 0476.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mr. President, and my apologies for that hiccup. There was some confusion in the dockets, and I think maybe in the conversation with administration. So for this particular docket, we absolutely want to suspend and pass, and so, as Chair of the Committee recommending that we suspend the rules and pass this docket, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's a $10,000 grant from the State Department's Public Health Department. It's a part of the national reporting system on violent deaths, and so this would be used to fund the collection of data, which would be really useful to our police department. So I ask for suspension of the rules and passage. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Clerk.
Of course, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0476. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0476, Counsela Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsela Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabby George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabby George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0476 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Counselor Flynn, for which purposes does the counselor rise, or raise his hand, I shouldn't say?
Mr. President, may I speak very briefly on the government ops that we just passed?
Certainly. The chair now recognizes the district council from South Boston, Counselor Flynn. The floor is yours briefly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was glad to support and vote for both of those. I just want to remind my colleagues, since we all supported this ordinance, we have to make sure during budget season that we effectively advocate for more inspectors for inspectional services. This might have several hundred or several thousand more of these types of shops opening up, so it's up to us now, after we voted in favor of it, to make sure that there's necessary funds in inspectional services for inspectors. So I'm going to make sure we work together on that. We probably need at least 10 inspectors, so we all need to work together to make sure that that's in the budget. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Of course. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, for those remarks. Madam Clerk, we are now moving on to matters recently heard for possible action. Would you begin by, please, reading dockets 0303 and 0261 together?
Certainly.
Point of clarification, my apologies.
Of course.
We voted for both dockets?
Well, I will defer to you, Madam Chair. We could read them individually. As I understand it, they're both assigned to Committee on Government Operations, or are both remaining in Committee on Government Operations? Is that correct?
No, you're... So, I thought we voted for the zoning amendment, and then we went to Counselor Campbell.
Yes, and now we're... I'm sorry, it's a little confusing. And now we're moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
But the ordinance?
We voted on the two reports of committees. We voted affirmatively for 415 and 216.
At the same time, then?
No, no, separate.
There were two different roll call votes.
Rent twice. Thank you.
Quite all right. Quite all right. So, we've done that. They both passed. We took... We went back to an earlier docket, Counselor... I can see the confusion. Counselor Flynn wanted to weigh in as well, so now we're moving to matters recently heard for possible action. And these are two dockets that have both been assigned to your committee. So, to expedite this wonderful meeting, I am asking the clerk to read docket 0303 and 0261 together, and then you can offer any comments if you wish. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. Docket 0303, an ordinance extending paid sick leave for City of Boston employees to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. And docket number 0261, an ordinance requiring equitable COVID-19 vaccine distribution in the city of Boston.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours on docket 0303 and 0261.
Thank you very much. I wanted to just thank all the folks for participating in this, in both matters. I will just state upfront, both matters will be staying in committee, so I'm going to be very brief in my description. First, with regards to 0303, the ordinance is setting paid sick leave. We received an extensive letter from former CFO, Emma Handy, explaining the different forms of leave that the city already provides. And as that was the only testimony we received from the administration, we decided we would come back to that discussion at another time, specifically on the paid sick leave and vaccinations. With regards to the equitable vaccine distribution, I'll just note, many of the folks who came and spoke was former Senator Diane Wilkerson of the Black Boston COVID-19 Coalition, Dr. Mark Lipsich, professor of epidemiology of Harvard School of Public Health, Dr. Cassandra Peer, medical doctor of public health programs, and associate hospital epidemiologist at Boston Medical Center, Stan McLaren, president and CEO of Harvard Street Neighborhood Health Center, and Ava Malona, excuse me, president and CEO of Massachusetts Immigrant and Refugee Advocacy Center. Also present were colleagues, including Counselor Michael Flaherty, Counselor Michelle Wu, who's the lead sponsor, Counselor Julia Mahia, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Kenzie Bach, Counselor Liz Braden, and Counselor Andrea Campbell. With regards to the equitable vaccine distribution, because there was some difference in between the time that the matter was filed, and then the way in which the state and, of course, the city and advocates have responded, there's a lot of what the ordinance was requesting was happening or began to happen. But at the time of filing, it did not... We did not see equitable distribution, to be very frank, in the city of Boston, if not the state. And so, right now, as stands, the ordinance would ensure at least one COVID-19 vaccination site operates in residential zip code, of which the city is not quite committed to or has some questions about. A new vaccination site would be first prioritized in the most impacted neighborhoods. Vaccination sites would also offer PCR or COVID-19 testing, regardless of immigration status, and we'll continue to do that at no cost and regardless of immigration status. One COVID-19 vaccination site in each neighborhood would at least operate early morning for odd hours, if you will. So, the early morning, late evenings, weekend hours, accommodating workers with non-traditional schedules. And we're going to create a single online interface for vaccination appointments, so that people could look and see where they can get an appointment online. And also would include a place where people can look online and see where they can volunteer. And the city was... is working on a lot of those things already, and is wanting to take a little bit more time and discuss, especially the zip code and the online interface, which there do exist two forms of it, but just not citywide. So, I would like to keep both matters in committee and look forward to having the continued conversation, ideally before April 19th, when the vaccinations are opened up for the general population.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Dockets 0303 and 0261 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0352?
Certainly. Docket 0352, a petition of a Yankee line for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for high over certain streets in Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Flynn, the Chair of the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Chair Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services held a hearing on this docket on Monday. Panelists present were Ed Hasford from Boston Transportation Department, Boston Police Captain James Goggan from the Hackney Carriage Unit, and Mike Costa, who's an executive with Yankee Line. I also want to thank Counselor Bach for being there and asking thoughtful questions. The petition from Yankee Line is to establish a bus line from 313 Congress Street, which is across the street from the Children's Museum in the Fort Point area. Basically, the route would be from there to the South Shore between five and 10 departures a day. This would mainly serve the South Boston waterfront area to the South Shore, and probably heading down towards Cape Cod from the South Shore area. This would be the petition is first direct to consumer service, since before this, Yankee Line was forced on providing chartered buses. The petitioner is willing to work with Boston Transportation Department and Boston Police to make sure that this service would be safe and up to standards. We had a robust discussion about pedestrian safety, about the safety of the bus, about where the bus would pull in and park, and the traffic lights, and all different segments as it related to pedestrian safety. There's still a lot of work to be done on this front, including more community outreach to neighborhood groups and residents about this proposal to gather additional feedback. At this time, Mr. President, I ask that it remain in committee and for further discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Docket 0352 will remain in the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0212 next?
Thank you. Docket 0212, an order for hearing regarding zoning relief for 100% affordable and deeply affordable housing project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Wu, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Chair Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, protemori, and thank you so much to both yourself and the lead sponsor, Counselor Bach, for ensuring that we had a really in-depth conversation, following up on some of the initiatives coming out of various city departments, and ensuring that the city is continuing to push forward. I'll defer to the sponsors on any particular comment or policy issues they would like to raise from our discussion, but would ask that this item stays in committee for further conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bach, are you... Did you just let it remain in committee?
Yep, excited for next steps, but I don't need to make extensive remarks, so thank you to the chair.
Fabulous. Thank you, and thank you for your partnership, Chair Bach, as well. Docket 0212 will remain in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0165?
Docket 0165, an order for hearing to discuss ways for the city to prevent and investigate incidents of hate crimes and discrimination.
Thank you. The chair now recognizes Counselor Julia Mahia, the Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights. Chair Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, the Committee on Civil Rights held a hearing to discuss ways for the city to prevent and investigate incidents of hate crimes and discrimination. We were joined by a number of my colleagues, including the sponsors, Counselor Flynn, Campbell, and Edwards. We were also joined by Counselors Wu, Asabi George, Flaherty, Braden, and Bach. From the administration, we had Deputy Superintendent James Chin, Sergeant Detective Robert Jorod, sorry about that, and Evandro Cavaro, Executive Director of Human Rights Commission. We were joined by community activist Suzanne Lee of the CPA, Lisa Lee of Viet Aid, and Bethany Lee of Great for Boston Legal Services. We were also joined by Abigail Taylor from the Office of the Attorney General. We had an incredibly rich discussion. Suzanne Lee started off with a powerful story about what discrimination and hate crimes looked like for her growing up. She described how her father only knew the three streets in Boston that he felt safer, not safe, safer, walking down. It triggered a lot of other people in attendance to share their own personal experiences. Everyone in the discussion, but in particular the advocates, pointed out that the hate crimes are more than just acts of violence. They're also policy decisions through zoning, development, language access, and other city services. We all have a lot of work to do to look at how our city perpetuates discrimination through our procedures and systems. The administration provided some crucial information and statistics regarding hate crimes in the city of Boston. We learned that in 2019, the city of Boston saw 14 bias incidents involving Asian victims. In 2020, we had 19 hate-bias incidents involving Asian victims. And that is the 35% increase in incidents. And while I think many of us already knew that there was a rise in anti-Asian sentiment in Boston, it is striking to hear that those... to hear those numbers out loud. Behind every one of those incidents is a person, a family, a community that is shaken to its core. We clearly have a lot of work to do to make our city kinder, safer, a place for all people of all backgrounds. Given the amount of work ahead of us, I plan to keep this docket in committee so that we may be... so that we may move into a working session as soon as possible. Thank you again to the sponsors, to the administration, my colleagues, and more importantly, to the advocates who dedicated so much of their time and passion to this fight.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mahia. Seeing no further discussion on docket 0165, it will remain in the Committee on Civil Rights. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0331.
Docket 0331, order for hearing regarding the state of affordable housing as to Boston's inclusionary development policy. Excuse me.
Quite all right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, the Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Chair Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure of chairing and also introducing this matter for discussion for the body. And I can tell you, this was a discussion that has been building up for many, many years. As Counselor Flaherty noted, he had been part of helping to push and move, and has been wanting to increase IDP. And I want to say again, thank you to all the colleagues who helped make it possible that we could have this discussion, so that one day we will increase the IDP and it be part of our zoning code, because we passed the home rule petition that allows for us to amend our linkage, but also allow for us to directly amend our zoning code and put our IDP in it. And that is why we're having this conversation, is because we want to hear from the community specifically about what they want to see as a reformed IDP policy before we went to draft it and before we went to pass a reformed policy. So, just to note, we had a very extensive conversation. The administration was represented by Sheila Dillon, Chief Sheila Dillon, Tim Davis, Michelle McCarthy, Brian Glasscock, and Lili Torres. The advocate panel consisted of Marvin Martin, Jason DeRosa, Margaret Turner, Marquesha Moore, and Cara Chen, I think, from a Coalition for Affordable Housing, or Truly Affordable Housing. And the coalition essentially talked about the four or five basic things that they would like to see as the discussion unfolds. That 33% of the new housing be truly affordable, that would be up from the 13% right now. That affordable housing, that truly affordable means that it's at an average AMI of about 40% for rental units, and between 50 and 100% AMI for ownership. That the amount of two-, three-, and four-bedroom apartments increase significantly as a requirement, so that they're rebuilding for families, that they actually be permanently affordable. One of the biggest issues, of course, is that we have affordability for a certain amount of time, and then they see it as a windfall when they sell the building, because it's no longer affordable. And then require affordability for projects less than 10 units. So, what is the triggering point when our IDP policy applies? Right now, it applies only if it's 10 units or more. So, those are kind of the shaping of this conversation. The administration admittedly was not ready to commit to anything, but they were committed to listening, and that's what we had asked them to come and do. And so, ultimately, it was a full hour of public testimony to follow, after a lot of discussion from my colleagues, and I want to thank them. I will be following up with them for their follow-up questions, from Counselor Flynn, who had 22 of them, to folks who had specific questions around data and so on and so forth. But I do appreciate every single one of the colleagues for showing up. I believe we had almost, if not every one of the colleagues come, discuss, and at least listen for a little bit. I think all of us are ready for this conversation. I will keep this in committee, and thank you very much for the opportunity to summarize.
Of course. Thank you, Chair Edwards. And seeing no further discussion, docket 0331 will remain in the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, to motions, orders, and resolutions. Would you please read docket number 479? I'm sorry, you are muted, Madam Clerk.
Sorry about that. Docket 0479, Counselor Mahia offered the following petition for special law regarding an act granting the city of Boston the authority to endow legal voting rights in municipal elections for the city of Boston residents aged 16 and 17 years old.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Julia Mahia. Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to suspend the rule and add Counselor Bach as an original cosponsor.
No need to suspend the rules, as you are the only one listed, but Counselor Kenzie Bach is hereby added as an original cosponsor. Please.
I was just testing you, okay? There... In our office, we have learned so many times that young people are the leaders of tomorrow. But through our work, we have often found that young people have to have no other choice but to step up and be the leaders of today. I started off my career in youth development, and have seen over the course of my career just how passionate and well-informed and dedicated young people are towards making their communities a better place. We have been inspired by young people in the community, from Kamani James to Nisargware to Kerry Mays and to so many others, who we have seen them step up to the plate time and time again, and to speak up on behalf of what they believe is a right. When they use their civic voice, we, as a council, have listened. But when it comes to young people using the most important aspect of civic voice, voting, people under the age of 18 are completely disregarded. Decisions that actively impact their lives are often made without them. They pay taxes, but don't have a say in how they are spent. They can be tried as adults, but treated as minors in other courts of the law. They are expected to advocate on behalf of their schools, but not given an equal voice to do so. And so, to address this fundamental civil rights issue, we have worked with young advocates across the city to write this home rule petition. Support for lowering the voting age can be seen across the Commonwealth, from local cities and towns, to even our Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, whose petition to lower the voting age on a federal level saw broad support. But here we are, in Boston, we need to do our part, too. We have such an exciting opportunity to empower a generation of young people to step up and make their voices heard. I look forward to working on this alongside all of you to see it pass quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The chair now recognizes the district counselor from Beacon Hill. Counselor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Counselor Mahia. When I saw this on the docket, I reached out to ask if I could partner on it. It's something I believe in very strongly. I think, as Counselor Mahia said, we see as counselors all the time, our young people speaking up on the issues that they're passionate about and joining our debates. But I... When I was in college, I was also a civics teacher in our Boston public schools, mainly at the Jacksonman in Counselor Braden's district, and Dearborn in Mayor Janey's district, and really saw what it looks like for young people to engage with and argue about and think about how to organize around the issues that affect their lives. And the big takeaway that I took from that is that, in many ways, having our voting age be 18, it sets us up for failure in terms of habit formation around voting. If you actually gave young people the chance to vote on issues relevant to their local communities when they're 16 or 17, they could actually have those debates in the hallways of our schools, they could go cast their ballots, and then before, often, you've got young people moving, whether to university, or jobs, or other things, at 18. You've had them have two, maybe three, years of opportunity to vote in their local community. And we've got lots of evidence that if you start voting early, you are likely to continue to do it and be an active voter throughout your life. But if the first time that you're eligible to vote is when you've just moved somewhere where you don't know anybody and you missed the registration deadline, you know, that doesn't set you up for, for success as a participant long-term. So I think we know that, that our 16, 17-year-olds can engage with issues, you know, just as robustly as adults do. I think frankly, it would be a great shift to go from us sort of begging 18-year-olds to register wherever they are when they turn 18, as opposed to kind of this being something that 16 and 17-year-olds are grasping at as part of their journey to adulthood. And, and I think that our civic life and participation would be the richer for their participation. So, you know, this is, this is about specifically voting on the municipal local level. I, I think that that would, I think that that would be a great move, and I know there's lots of work ahead to make it happen, but I look forward to the conversation with the council and, and I'm proud to be a cosponsor on this. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bach. Is there any further discussion on 0479? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name to Docket 0479? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Anissa Asabi George. Please add Counselor Liz Braden. Please add Counselor Michael Flaherty. Please add Counselor Michelle Wu. Please add Counselor Andrea Campbell. Please add Counselor Ricardo Arroyo. Please add the chair's name. In Docket 0479, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, would you please now read Docket 0480?
Thank you. Docket 0480, Counselor Asabi George offered the following resolution in support of common stat legislation, Bill House, Docket number 1960, and Senate, Docket number 1307.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Anissa Asabi George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. At many points during this pandemic, we as a body have recognized the critical role of early childcare providers in our city. Not only are early education and childcare opportunities essential for working parents, but they lay the foundation for our children's development and lifelong learning. Most of our childcare workers are women of color and most make minimum wage at provider organizations that operate on shoestring budgets. This resolution is in support of the common stat legislation currently making its way through the State House. This legislation would create a much-needed framework for increasing funding for early education and childcare, as well as improving childcare affordability, especially for our lowest-income families. I strongly urge the State House to move swiftly on this matter. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Is there any further discussion on 0480? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Lydia Edwards, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Julia Mahia, Counselor Michael Flaherty, Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, Counselor Michelle Wu. Please add the chair's name as well, and Counselor Andrea Campbell and Counselor Ed Flynn as well, Counselor Kenzie Bach. Seeing and hearing no further discussion or names to be added, Counselor Frank Baker, I think we're batting a thousand there, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket 0480. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0480, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, and Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Mr. President, Docket number 0480 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Counselor Asabi George. Madam Clerk, would you now please read Docket 0481?
Thank you. Docket 0481, Counselors Edwards and Wu offered the following ordinance amending the City of Boston Code, Section 5-5.20, paid parental leave for City of Boston employees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes the District Counselor from East Boston, Counselor Lydia Edwards. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours. You are muted, Counselor Edwards.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much. I wanted to first note that I have substituted draft of the ordinance. For my colleagues, there's been no change in the actual legal language, just the "whereas" clauses.
Okay, so, colleagues, a copy of Docket 0481 with substitute language is now, or will shortly be in your inbox. It seems to me that it's essentially technical in nature, is that correct? So are there any objections to the substitution of language? Seeing and hearing none, Doc, you may proceed, Counselor Edwards, on Docket 0481 with substitute language, which is now before all members of this body.
And I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Anissa Asabi George as an original cosponsor.
Counselor Edwards moves her for suspension of Rule 12 and an addition of Counselor Anissa Asabi George as the third cosponsor of Docket 0481. Seeing and hearing no objection, Counselor Asabi George is hereby added. Thank you, and please proceed, Counselor Edwards.
Thank you. I think we all understand that parental leave is essentially two things. It's workers' rights, and it's about gender equity, and ensuring that those who have an addition to their family, that they are able to adjust and they're able to make sure that as new parents or continuing being parents, that they are able to balance their work, their life, and also the new love of their life. That's a beautiful thing, and I think it's incredible that we, as a city, have led in that conversation. So I want to thank Counselor Wu for her 2015 ordinance that actually allowed for the City of Boston city workers and those who are in unions that have parental leave, as of 2015, have that right. Recently, former Mayor Walsh also updated the laws to assure that the six weeks became 12 weeks, and there were some other technical things done, but they were done through a policy. And we want to make sure that policies, certain policy aspects need to be codified. And so we've taken some of those things and put them in the amended language. But one thing that stands still, and I think was recently highlighted by the fact that New Zealand has changed their parental leave or their leave policies to include miscarriages, is that, as filed in 2015 and as despite the recent updates from Counselor, from former Mayor Walsh, we do allow for those who would be parents but could not become parents to take some leave. That's a good thing. We allow that only, unfortunately, when it comes to stillbirth. Stillbirth are those incidences when a president, pregnancy is lost after 20 weeks legally defined. But many of my friends and some of my family members know that you can lose a pregnancy in different ways beyond stillbirth. And that is why we want to update the language to assure that loss of pregnancy in the forms that it can come, before 20 weeks, as a miscarriage, through a D and E, which is a dilation and extraction after our first trimester, through termination, all the different ways in which you may lose a pregnancy is also included. Don't feel that it's necessarily the City of Boston's business necessarily for someone to have to explain all of the details as to how they lost a pregnancy, but inasmuch as we are putting in a form of it, it should be inclusive. This, otherwise, would be parents who have lost their pregnancy have to use sick leave or vacation leave, and I don't find that that is appropriate nor fair. I think this makes us more equitable, this makes us stronger as a city in acknowledging that there is a loss of pregnancy and that a person may, they're not required, but they may need to take leave in order to deal with that. This is a, this is a movement of compassion, inclusion, gender equity, and of course, workers' rights. And so I'm excited to have this conversation with the administration. I'm excited to discuss appropriate regulations that could support it, and I look forward to making sure that we modernize our laws in the most compassionate way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. The chair now recognizes the at-large Counselor from Rosendale. Counselor Wu, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you so much to the lead sponsor on this. This was one of the very first ordinances that I took up in my first term on the council. Six years ago, I was not only a new counselor but a new mom and had been trying to balance everything with the arrival of Blaze and just completely overwhelming, to be honest. But what made it possible for the city of Boston to become one of the first cities in the country to enact this kind of legislation at the municipal level were the stories of so many residents who were generous enough to share their personal experiences with me, given what I was going through at that time, and all of our colleagues who unanimously supported this in 2015. So I want to thank especially our co-sponsors from then, Counselor Tim McCarthy, Counselor Tito Jackson, who, who brought incredible insights from, from their lived experiences as well to this issue, and want to thank the colleagues who are on the council today who, who were part of that initial push. It's incredibly important that we update the amount of time that we are giving families to be just a little bit more reasonable in acknowledging how much it benefits everyone when we are investing in our families, investing and making it possible for our workforce to be as strong and healthy and whole in, in their families and their emotional lives. And so it benefits us as an employer in the city of Boston, too, to take, to take this on. And I'm, it's incredibly important to take on this new piece as well, to see the progress made in other parts of the country and acknowledging how much emotion, how much a person can be truly affected by loss of pregnancy as well. So I'm eager to make sure that we are taking that step forward and codifying that into our legislation, as so many are affected across our city by this issue as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wu. The chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Anissa Asabi George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Edwards and Counselor Wu, for including me on this ordinance. This is a much-needed amendment to our parental leave policy, and I'm grateful we're taking this on. Whether you realize it or not, we all know someone who has experienced the loss of a pregnancy. I know this to be a physically, emotionally, and mentally exhausting experience that is often kept secret, and those experiencing it are often unable to get the care they need. Incorporating it into our leave policy is a common sense change that will have a beneficial impact on all of our city's employees. I hope that we will pass this amendment soon and other cities will follow suit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much, Counselor Asabi George. Having been asked to very briefly take up the chair, I'd like to recognize the District Six Counselor from West Roxbury, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just wish to commend the three makers, ask that my name be added. I was incredibly fortunate to have taken advantage of paternity leave for young Margot over the last several weeks, and I'm incredibly grateful for the support that, that this policy has allowed my family to take advantage. I'm also grateful that Massachusetts now has a tremendous paid family leave bill which went into effect this year, which we're also taking advantage of. I'm particularly grateful for the language as it relates to the sudden loss of a, of a pregnancy. It was a little more than two years ago that Catherine and I were delighted to learn that we were expecting our first, and we lost that child to miscarriage, and it was absolutely devastating. And it's the type of thing that few people talk about, but so many people have endured. And I'm grateful to Counselor Asabi George, former Counselor McCarthy, who I know were incredible strength, rocks for Catherine and me during that time. So I am just really delighted that, and grateful to be part of this, and ask that my name be added, and look forward to codifying this, and just really am grateful for each and every one of you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Please add my name. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much, Counselor O'Malley, for those words. And, and seeing no further discussion, I'd ask colleagues to raise your physical hands to have your name added to this docket. Madam Clerk, would you please add my, myself, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Julia Mahia, Counselor Andrea Campbell, Counselor Michael Flaherty, Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, Counselor Frank Baker, and then you should have Counselor Matt O'Malley, and, and obviously the three cosponsors. And Counselor Mahia, we got you.
I was, I don't have the option to raise my.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Counsel, Counselor Mahia, you have the floor.
So I, I just wanted to thank my colleagues. I, I, when I see this type of work, we're leading with compassion, we're leading with heart, and I'm so incredibly grateful to be a part of this body. And Counselor O'Malley, just so beautiful to, to, to hear your vulnerability in this space, and I just wanted to thank you for sharing that with us. And Counselor Wu, and Counselor Asabi George, and Counselor Edwards, thank you so very much. This is the sort of stuff that I think makes our hearts swell because we're leading with love and heart. And so, thank you, and look so very much forward to, to, to helping you all bring this to life. So, thank you.
Thank you, so much, Counselor Mahia. With that, the, Madam Clerk, the chair will remand this matter to the Committee on Government Operations, and, and I'd like to yield back the chair to the President.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bach. We are now moving on to personnel orders. There are no personnel orders on this week's agenda. And now moving to late files, I'm informed by the clerk, there is one late file matter, which is a personnel order. We will now take a roll call to add this item onto the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. For a late file personnel order, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Well, Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Late file matters properly before the body.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Would you please read the late file matter into the record?
Thank you. Boston City Council, March 31, 2021, Counselor O'Malley for Counselor Mahia.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the late file matter. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. And Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu. Mr. President, our late file personnel order has passed unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now moving on to the green sheets. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this point. Seeing and hearing no takers, we move along to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. For the consent agenda, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mahia.
Yes.
Counselor Mahia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Councillor O'Malley, yes. And Councillor Wu?
Yes.
Councillor Wu, yes. Mr. President, the consent agenda has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are moving right along to announcements. Do any councillors have wished to share any announcements? The Chair now recognizes the district councillor from Austin-Brighton, Councillor Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As mentioned earlier in our meeting, this is Trans Day of Visibility. International Transgender Day of Visibility is an annual event occurring on March 31 and dedicated to celebrating transgender people and raising awareness of discrimination faced by transgender people worldwide, as well as a celebration of their contributions to society. I'm very glad to uphold and recognize this day to day. So often, our transgender brothers and sisters are invisible and unrecognized and subject to violence and hate crimes, as we've discussed even this week. So I really want to just take a moment to recognize this. This is a very important day for the transgender community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Councillor Braden, well said, and it was very important. So I appreciate your remarks. Chair now recognizes the district councillor from Beacon Hill. Councillor Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to echo Councillor Braden and also just express my well wishes to constituents and folks around the City of Boston, both who are marking Passover this week and who are marking Holy Week. You know, I was thinking a lot, my own church has not reopened for in-person celebrations yet, and so we were outside of it on Sunday with palms, sort of marking Palm Sunday at the threshold and around the corner from my house, the Vilnius Shul, the historic synagogue, has undergone this great renovation with CPA dollars and yet hasn't been able to kind of reopen and invite everybody in again because of the pandemic, but has a wonderful art installation this week honoring Passover out in front. And so I just want to mark, you know, this moment that's really, a really important series of festivals in both the Jewish and Christian traditions, and ones of, you know, both waiting and then deliverance, and just acknowledge the fact that, you know, when we had to do these apart from each other a year ago, I had hoped that we would all be back in person by now. And I think that, you know, we are in a more hopeful season, and I know that some of us are going to be able to celebrate, either have celebrated Passover Seder's or are going to be able to celebrate Easter, you know, in small groups with maybe family members who are vaccinated and such, but that it still feels like we're kind of getting out of Egypt. We're not quite there yet. But I think it's still, you know, a moment, a moment, I hope, of kind of passage into freedom and a period in which we are able to still mark those important holidays with those who we love and are part of our community. So just wanted to honor both of those. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you, Councillor Bach. Chair now recognizes the district councillor from South Boston, Councillor Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just wanted to let the public know that this week we celebrated the honoring Vietnam veterans throughout the country on Vietnam Veterans Day. 58,000 men and women were killed in that war, and we honor and remember them, you know, during this day, but also every day. We remember their families and the sacrifice as well for their families. We recently had an event in South Boston at Meadowlawn Park. I was there with Councillor Flaherty. But we built the first memorial in the country in South Boston, where we lost 25 men from our community during the Vietnam War. And every neighborhood has contributed and sacrificed. So I just wanted to highlight the incredible sacrifice and service of so many Vietnam veterans across the city. And one of my good friends who passed away last year was a friend of this council, friend of this body, was Joe Zink, who was active in the Dorchester Vietnam Veterans Memorial. He and I were active in the Disabled American Veterans, and he was my roommate when he went to Washington to lobby Congress in support of DAV issues. But just wanted to say thank you to all the families of Vietnam veterans across the rate of Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councillor. It's been important to note particularly our Vietnam servicemen and women, and appreciate your Chair now recognizes the district councillor from Matapan, Councillor Campbell. The floor is yours. You're muted, Councillor Campbell, and your video's off. I do see your hand raised. There may be some technical difficulties.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Councillor.
Sorry, I quickly had to step out of City Hall, but I'll be back. I just, it's a little painful to talk about, just want to acknowledge someone who's on the tributes, so two people. One is Dorothy Johnson and Harleen Donaldson, who are two family members of mine who recently passed away. My cousin was Harleen, who passed away yesterday morning, which was a bit of a surprise for our family. And Dorothy was her mother, my aunt, was born and raised in the City of Boston, was the youngest, I'm sorry, the oldest sister of my father. And so it's been a tough time for my family, but just wanted to name their names out loud. And they were beautiful women. They were strong women in my life. They'll never end up in a history book, but they played a critical role in my development, in my strength and my courage through some very difficult times. So I just wanted to name them and lift them up. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Campbell, and on behalf of the entire body, please, your family, there is in all of our thoughts and prayers, we're very sorry for your two losses. The Chair now recognizes the at large councillor from South Boston, Councillor Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give a shout out to Boston Pride, who made history on March 27, which was last Saturday, is the first team to win the National Women's Hockey League, basically their version of the Stanley Cup. So, and hope they get to walk safely in a parade in the very near future. And the captain was Gillian Dempsey, who was also the MVP of the tournament. So a lot of folks know that my cousin Colleen is a gold medal recipient. She played for the United States Women's Gold Olympic Medal Team in Nagano and had a very successful career in hockey. And it's great to see. And my daughter, as she played throughout her entire youth and through high school as well. So it's a great sport and great to see women being recognized. And congratulations to Boston Pride on behalf of the Boston City Council.
Well said. We remain title town. Thank you, Councillor Flaherty. Chair now recognizes the at large councillor from Dorchester, Councillor Mahia. The floor is yours.
I'd like to thank Councillor Bach for teaching me how to find my hand again, because I could not find it. But I just wanted to quickly just come out here and just congratulate the Boston, the Black Boston COVID Coalition for their efforts in trying to vaccinate as many people of color in our community. They saw an increase in the number of people who are signing up for vaccination. And I think that as we continue to have more access, it's going to be really important for us to continue to encourage our constituents to sign up and get vaccinated soon. They're going to open up more folks to be able to do so. So just encouraging folks who are tuning in to be on the lookout and make sure you sign up to get vaccinated. As soon as it's my turn, I will be doing so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Important reminder. Appreciate your work. Thank you, Councillor Mahia. Seeing no further announcements, we're now moving on to memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Councillor Arroyo, Norman Britt. For Councillor Campbell, Harleen Donaldson, Charlene Francis, Dorothy Johnson, and Victor Emmanuel Seymour Richards. For Councillor Campbell and the Chair, James Jim Montague. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again remotely next Wednesday, April 7, at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
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 I'll oppose nay. The ayes have it. The Boston City Council is hereby adjourned.
Good job.